Okay, let's get started. Let's call the City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting to order Tuesday, May 18th to 19th, sorry, 2020 at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Pigley, Wigley, and Milton City Hall.
And just to review, so if we're doing a motion, you'll raise your hand and I'll try to see it along with a second. And then when we are discussing items on the agenda, we'll go through elder person by elder person to get your thoughts and comments. And it's really more of a reminder for me. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Ryan Hullbrook is making the motion to approve the agenda and Bill Wilson is seconding it by the raise of their hands. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an agenda. So the reason that I am up here is because I thought it would be easier for you to see the flag to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So let's see if that is actually... Oh yeah, it is true. It is true. Okay. So let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So we had some sad news this week with the news that a former elder person, Dave Adams, had passed away and I would just like to have a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you very much, everyone. Number four is public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Is there anybody other than Ben in the audience to make a public comment?
Stan is also there. Stan Stricker joined us as well.
Oh, Stan, how nice of you. You guys are totally throwing me off tonight. Okay. And I don't have anybody signed in on my clipboard either here, so. We will move on to the mayoral proclamation of EMS Week. It's just going to take me a second to pull it up because I left the folder in my mailbox. Whereas emergency medical services is a public service and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by Designated Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I and Nisa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th through May 23rd, 2020 as National EMS Week in the City of Milton and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to appreciate the contributions which these emergency medical services teams make every day to our health, safety, and quality of life. Item number six, approval of the consent agenda. Linda, Larry? Linda motioned to approve it and Larry seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and action regarding Resolution 2015, supporting the creation of a Rock County Response Reopening and Recovery Task Force. And there, the resolution was attached in documents.
Please, I didn't know if you want me to give an overview of the task force?
Yep, that's a good idea.
Okay. So about a week or so ago, Josh Smith, as you probably have already, some of this is kind of old news now, but a week or so ago, Josh Smith and the county had reached out to several members of the community and stakeholders in the Rock County region to develop a task force which would be tasked with the kind of response reopening and recovery for Rock County. That task force is also kind of, was also tasked with kind of the creation of the reopening plan for Rock County. They did meet for their very first time yesterday, so that's why this resolution is somewhat kind of moot, but I do think it's still relevant in the sense that if the council so wishes to show support for the initiative that that task force has undertaken and then the eventual product that they produced. So I guess that's my take on it at this point. And Nisa, I don't know if you want to add anything else to it?
Yeah, and the idea is that this task force will continue to meet as we go through what is likely to be, you know, a long-term plan of opening up in phases and monitoring how the COVID-19 virus is impacting our community and our health and our businesses. So I think it's important that we have some level of certainty for our businesses and for our citizens and have some general guidelines for people to refer to as we move along. I think this is very helpful for us to have this task force and to have really representation from throughout the county, different leaders, nonprofits, and chambers involved so we're collaboratively addressing the issues as we move into the next phase. So I'll go around and see if there's any questions or comments from anybody. Larry, any questions or comments?
No, I have nothing. Better be.
Bill?
No comments or questions.
Teresa? Teresa? Teresa, you're muted.
I'm...
There you go.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Brian?
Sounds good to me.
Devin?
Nothing I can think of.
Linda? Linda, nothing?
No. I said, "Sounds good."
Oh, okay, you were muted. Sorry. I'm taking my glasses on and off, so you know, it's anybody's guess what's going on here right now. So is there a motion to support Resolution 2015, the creation of a Rock County Response Reopening and Recovery Task Force?
So, Mo.
Linda has motioned and Ryan has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Number eight, discussion and possible action on amending the contract with the city assessor.
So as you can see in the memo, last year when we were creating the budget process, we budgeted for a revaluation, a citywide revaluation for the City of Milton. This would be slightly different than what we undertook two years ago. That was a full-blown revaluation, whereas this would be merely a kind of a paper revaluation which would look at the marketplace, sales, improvements, and things of that nature. In discussions among staff, we felt that it may be prudent to delay that citywide revaluation, really due to, you know, not creating additional uncertainty and potential kind of heartache that may be caused through the revaluation process, understanding that the revaluation process is a tax-neutral undertaking, meaning that although values may increase, the tax rate would decrease at a commensurate amount, but that isn't always equal in all cases. Some people may see a larger increase and some people may see a larger decrease than what the average tax rate, tax revaluation or reassessment would see. And we felt like, you know, Nisa has talked a lot in many of our meetings about, you know, folks kind of being overwhelmed, and we did not want to add to that. So in discussions with staff and then the discussions with our appraiser and the discussions, we talked about, or I'm sorry, our assessor, we talked about what our options would be and we still do have an option available to us at this time to delay the revaluation either to 2021 or 2022. And with the uncertainty of the marketplace out there, it may, it may end up being longer than that, but we're not sure. But all we know is right now, we don't want to add another layer of stress potentially to people's lives. We understand that the marketplace is in fluctuation right now and, you know, even if we did undertake a revaluation this year, we may end up undertaking another one next year anyways if things go the opposite direction. So it's more of a philosophical discussion, but one that we feel is important to have with the council. And ultimately, if the council agrees with staff recommendation, it would require us to amend the contract with our city assessor, which is Musser Appraisals, to extend, I guess, to expand the scope of his contract by $12,000, not to exceed $12,000 for the next two years. And ultimately, what that would be is the increased costs for having to kind of redo some of the work he has done in preparation for the 2020 revaluation. So I know that there's a lot in there in what I just said, and I do understand again that this is a philosophical question, but one that we felt was important to talk about and show that we are, our understanding of the consternation that exists out in the public.
Okay, so I'll go from the other way. Linda, do you have any questions or comments?
I was kind of wondering how this is going to affect our budget, any, in like, say, the next five years.
It wouldn't, other than the $12,000 increase to the assessor's contract. Again, revaluations are tax-neutral, meaning that any increase, there is a commensurate decrease, so that wouldn't affect our budget in any way, shape, or form because ultimately it doesn't affect the tax levy, other than the $12,000 expansion of the contract.
Devin, any questions or comments?
No.
Ryan?
No.
Teresa?
I think that we do have some obligation to empathize with our taxpayers, that, you know, I agree with Al that there are, you know, this is our, our one avenue to, to look at, reaching out to our taxpayers and showing that there, there is an opportunity to give a little bit of a break in looking into the, the coming year that this would be it. I do like it.
Thank you, Teresa. Bill?
Yeah, you know, what we're, we're buying for the public is certainty. You know, it's conceivable that there are some people who are in need whose assessment would go down and, you know, would pay a lower tax rate. But, you know, what we're buying is a certainty and it's really hard to explain this anyway. You know, people understand that, you know, once you start looking at things, their taxes are going to go up. And, you know, given that it's revenue neutral and we're just creating kind of a certainty for the public, I think that's a good thing. Stability is a good thing.
Thanks, Phil. Larry?
Just a fiscal question, I guess. In terms of the $12,000, would that be like paid over two years? Would it be a lump sum this year to the budget, I guess, my first question?
We haven't fully determined that in talks with, with Paul Musser. He, he's open to whatever approach we take from a budgetary standpoint. I think, I think it's, I think it's to be determined as to how we would fund it. You know, in one scenario, we would spread it out, $6,000 in 2021, $6,000 in 2022, or we could look at a situation as the year goes on, or maybe in early 2021, if we have a residual funds left over from some other project, perhaps we could just pay it off and be done with it. But I think that's open for discussions. But I think with, with Musser Appraiser, he's been incredibly flexible in this and we appreciate his, his candor in this conversation with us, frankly. And so I think that's open for discussion. Wouldn't you agree, Dan? Is there anything I'm missing?
No, you're not. And so much so, when we, when we, when we left Accord Appraisal several moons ago now, when we got the bids back, for those of you that were on council, if you remember, Paul's overall contract was about $150,000 less than the next closest person. So Paul takes a very humanistic standpoint to all this and he's super flexible. He said, "You just tell me what you want to do."
Well, that's helpful. And then I have a second comment, I guess. And I think, I think most of the citizens out there know the answer to this, but just to assure everybody, there is no negative impact on, potential negative impact on the overall citizenry by us delaying this assessment or this evaluation. Is that a fair statement?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. I mean, when the, when the revale was done in 2018, that really leveled the, the playing field out and that was evident by the data and how some people saw much larger increases because the, the value they had on the, on the books in previous years was extremely low. There were several people that saw decreases in their assessment for that very same reason because there wasn't necessarily a consistent practice that had been applied by the previous company. And so I believe whenever we do the next revaluation, whether it would have been this year, like we talked about in the fall, or it's next year, or it's 2022, so many more people are going to be so much closer to whatever the average was, is that it, it's really not going to change people's tax bills based on assessed value too much. The only thing that would really drive a, someone's tax bill from going up or down would be the levies by this body plus the school district and the county and, and Blackhawk Tech would be the, the driving forces. And obviously, there's going to be a few outliers, but it's not going to be, I don't think, as deep as it was two years ago.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I would agree with exactly how Bill put it. This, this provides certainty. This provides, maybe it's, maybe even better, this, this, this takes one thing off the table that folks don't have to worry about. And although in, in the long run, these things generally even out, I don't know that anybody's really in the mood to wait the long run. They just want to know right now, and I totally understand that, and I appreciate Dan using the word humanistic approach because I feel like that's what this is.
Thank you, Larry. Is there a motion then to amend the contract with the city assessor? Mark, is there anything else we need to add?
This Mark here?
Yeah, that Mark, that Mark. I need a middle initial, please, so I can...
Well, let's let Mark Langer answer the question first.
Sorry.
I think you're just going to have a motion to direct staff to negotiate a new contract with the city assessor with an amount not to, to increase an amount, not to exceed $12,000, I understand.
Correct. Is there a motion? Larry and Teresa?
Yep.
Larry motioned and Teresa seconded. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. I went to check this off before the motion went through. Sorry about that. All right. Discussion and possible action on authorizing funding and regarding preliminary public works resolutions 2013, 2014 concerning the assessment of sanitary sewer mains for the 2020 sanitary sewer main installation on North Janesville Street.
Go ahead, Al.
As you say, I can kick this one off, but Howie's going to have the more meat and potatoes. Just to kind of bring folks back around, this was a discussion we had at the last council meeting in which we kind of asked council their direction on how we wanted to, how they wanted to proceed in terms of the situation that exists at 331 North Janesville Street in which the owner informed us that they had a failed septic system. And did the council want to proceed with allowing him to install a new septic system or investigate the possibility of extending a sanitary sewer main to his property or beyond his property? And that's ultimately what we have here. So I can turn it over to Howie and Mark Langer, Mark E. Langer now.
Okay. Normally, you only get one resolution for a request like this. We have two on here because the better of the two ideas, the long-term plan, would be to extend the sanitary sewer main all the way out to Bowers Lake. That takes care of future bookups for those remaining houses that someday their septics will fail. And also, if you have a longer main, you're going to get a better price per foot, hopefully, than just installing just enough to serve that one house. And even with serving that one house, you'd actually have to serve two or three of the lots just to make it come out to an even stop and all, and get to the end of his lot. The lot lines don't match right across from each other on that street. The owner has been, you know, told, talked to, you know, about an estimate for the price. Dan has looked up the funding for the sanitary sewer for the utility and there is enough, there are enough funds in there to do the, the long-term planning to go out to Bowers Lake. This would allow the city to have future expansion that way and also to the, to the west of Old Highway 26 or North Janesville Street out to those existing, the farm fields out there if we ever had to. So, but the two resolutions are there also because if you only want to do the less expensive one, which would be just to serve those three houses, which you could do, or we have the other resolution, which is better for long-term planning, and also that one would probably get the person that has to hook up a lower per foot price. If he has the shorter version, there's a good chance that you're, just like, one person is going to pay all the mobilization costs, but you're going to be the same if you put in the 900 feet compared to the 300 feet. So, so I guess our, I don't, Mark, you can say you want, but engineering and public works would probably prefer the long-term plan and then we won't have to worry about it in the future for those other houses in case their septics fail. And this would allow us to go to a public hearing and we have to do a bid yet and get the bid back to make sure that it matches the estimates, which, which, you know, and this work would be done this summer, hopefully done by September, by middle of September. And like I said, the person that has to hook up to the septic's already been informed of the information about it.
Mark E., any, anything else?
No, I think Howie covered pretty much everything. There's other questions I can answer.
Okay. So Teresa, we're going to start with you. Any questions or comments?
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
Bill, any questions or comments?
I guess the question is in terms of affordability. Obviously, option two is considerably more expensive than option one in the short term. And the question, I guess, would be to, you know, probably Dan in terms of, you know, comfort level with that, you know, relatively sizable, unanticipated project coming out of this year's budget.
Like, like the, the document in there that is labeled wastewater cash availability, that is looking at just our cash that's on hand at the end of April, so it's super current. And we're factoring out required reserves that we need to have for equipment replacement. We're factoring in a good six to seven months of cash flow for regular operating and maintenance, which is just good practice. And then we've got $300,000 that will be ultimately reimbursed by the DOT for the fourth main project and a few other projects, and there's still cash left. And in talking with Mark Langer, we are comfortable with the notion, as long as the, you know, the bid doesn't come in super crazy, if it comes in somewhere in that 200, 230,000 range of utilizing those funds to just take care of this so we don't have future headache, heartache, and having to redo this because it could happen where we, if we ended up doing this, the short little 350 feet or whatever it was, you know, another septic could fail and we'd be right back at this, you know, it could be six months from now, it could be seven years. If we had a crystal ball, it'd make it a heck of a lot easier, but...
I prefer, you know, I prefer going the, the whole distance. I just kind of wanted to hear it from the horse's mouth in terms of the affordability question.
Yeah. And, and I'd prefer to just take it all the way to the end so we don't have to, for the, for the same reasons that Howie and Mark have, him and the three of us have discussed to nauseam this past week on this, so.
For, for the record, I think Dan's been called worse.
Not by me.
Larry? Anything?
I had to get that in.
All right, you used your turn. No.
I, I think option two is better. I kind of, I agree with, I very much agree. I don't kind of agree with Alderman Wilson, but also I think it's better for the future, the other property owners because inevitably, you'll have to do something out there and the costs will be higher. I mean, we know that. The cost, every time you go into a project like that, every year, there's additional costs. And so option two, I think is better for the community and certainly better for the wastewater budget.
Okay, thanks, Larry. Devin, anything?
Comment? I think everything's been said.
Linda? Thank you, Devin.
I agree with Devin. I think everything's been said. I like option two. I think it just makes more sense.
All righty then. Well, is there, yes?
You skipped me.
Oh, Ryan, I'm sorry.
Actually, a question. The memo mentions that there was an attachment for cost estimates, but I did not see the actual cost estimates. So what are they? What are the cost estimates for both options?
For option one, which was approximately 350 feet of sewer, the estimated cost was $78,000.
Okay.
And then for option two, which is for approximately 600 feet of sewer, the estimated cost was $152,000, so just under, the total was actually right at $230,000. estimated cost was 152,000. So just under, the total was actually right at 230,000.
Ryan, anything else? Sorry about that.
Nope, I just was curious what the cost was.
I got excited with my check marks on my page again. Okay, so if we're going with two, is that resolution 202014?
Anita?
Yeah?
I think it's important to note that the recommendation approves both resolutions because when we put it out to bid, we did a base bid to cover that first piece, and then we did an alternate bid just to see what the prices come back. And those bids are gonna be opened or whatever the new vernacular is, on the 28th of May. And we'll bring those back to the council on the 2nd of June. So I think the, the recommendation could be as written in the memo to approve funding for the installation of the sanitary sewer main and adopt resolution 2020-13 and 2020-14, and schedule a public hearing for the potential assessments to affected property owner.
Mark S., Mark Schroeder, are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, so then, we just need somebody to raise their hand. Linda has motioned and Teresa has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item number 10, discussion and possible action regarding a city face mask and cloth face covering policy.
So typically, we try to do policy updates once a year. We typically do that in like February or March, but because we're in a unique situation, we have developed this policy, which would, in essence, require all city employees to wear a face mask or face covering when they are in direct contact with the public or unable to maintain social distancing guidelines when within their, our public facilities. So if you're in a common area, hallway, break room, things of that nature. It's important to note that with the declaration of emergency, this item also would not have had to come to the council, but we thought it was important and prudent to do so based on the topic. So we wanted folks to be able to kind of see the policy, understand the policy. This has gone through a number of vetting processes internally with staff. And in fact, there are several departments that have kind of, in essence, already instituted this anyways on a compliance basis, or folks, you know, just believe it's the right thing to do, so they do it kind of thing. But we wanted to put ourselves in a firmer footing from a liability standpoint in terms of saying, you know, I think we should have developed a policy so there's equity in the system. So we wanted to bring this forward for there to be any discussion if folks had some.
Okay. Brian, I'm gonna make sure I don't forget you, so I'm gonna start with you.
No, no questions.
Okay, Devin?
Nothing.
Linda?
I was just kind of wondering, do we know if the municipalities around us are, are they doing this same type of implementation of especially the masks? Because I just know that a lot of people seem to be opposed to this. I personally am not, but do we have any information of what anybody else is requiring, or maybe CIVMIC, if they've given us any thoughts?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can answer a couple of those, and then Inga can probably elaborate even further, because I know she was on a call today. We talked with CIVMIC about this at great length, and they, they recommended that we put a policy together. They have many members who have done so already, and their only guidance was just make sure that it kind of passes the legal muster with our city attorney. Originally, this was part of our reopening plan, but we took that out because our reopening plan kind of got put on hiatus while things kind of got cleared up in the state and the county. So we pulled this piece out and had it isolated because we wanted to kind of have this talked about. I am aware of, from a personal standpoint, I'm aware of many other municipalities that are doing this. Janesville's doing it for, Beloit is doing it, our fire department's doing it, our public works department's already doing it, our library's already doing it. So, yeah, I am aware that many other communities are doing it. CIVMIC has advised us to do so if we feel it's prudent, and they have many members who are doing it as well. And Inga, I don't know if you have anything you want to add from your call today?
Um, no, there wasn't much to add from the call today, and Ashley was on that too, so maybe she picked up something else. Just some other recommendations they had was the guidance that's being referenced in the policy, just make sure to have copies of those electronic sources, because those electronic sources are changing on a fairly constant basis as we learn more about, about the virus. So we'll probably be doing that, so we'll have that supporting documentation to go along with the policy if we have any questions on it at a later date.
So then, do these other municipalities, Al, do they, do they have a specific policy?
You know, that's a, that's a good question. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I mean, that was CIVMIC's recommendation, that if we're gonna do this, we should have a policy, so that's what we did. But that's a good question. I'm not sure if they have a policy per se. I'm gonna guess Janesville does, but I don't know that for certain.
Yeah, I think when we had our call with Ernie, they do have a policy.
They do? Okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, now that you mention that, yes, I believe you're correct. They have been, they've been masked, even though that's kind of somewhat of an odd term these days for quite some time, for several weeks.
Okay.
And I think just one more thing to add is that CIVMIC talked about having a policy, but also to make sure that it's uniformly applied across your departments. So with public works already doing it, library already doing it, police already doing it, we're just trying to formalize that a little bit more to make sure we're consistent across the board.
And when we do reopen to the public, we wanted to make sure we had something, although we don't know at this time when we're gonna reopen to the public. You know, we wanted to make sure we had something in place, so it wasn't reactionary and it wasn't, you know, again, putting too much on people at one time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Teresa?
Yeah, just, you know, as you go through it, you know, it says it expires when the reopening plan phases are complete, but as you go through it, you may find that this too may phase out before you actually complete the rest of it, because it may not be a full-time procedure once you get to the phasing out. It depends on, you know, it just depends.
So. And I, I agree 100%. Yeah.
So, we'll just, we'll find out once we go through it.
We'll find out together.
Oh, boy. Thanks, Teresa. Bill?
No comment.
Larry?
No comment.
Okay, then, Al, what sort of action are you thinking of? Or is it needed, or?
It would be nice, I think, if there was just a motion to approve the City of Milton cloth face coverings during the COVID-19 pandemic for city staff, something to that effect. And I think that's important to note. This is for city staff. We're not, at this time, requiring it for individuals who come into our facilities.
But elected officials, it's, we, right, Alman?
Yes.
Can you come back in?
Yeah.
I'm kidding.
Want me back in, don't you, eventually?
I miss you. I'm sure city staff is probably sick of meeting with me all the time, but I do miss the city.
I'm watching. To that effect, that we adopt the policy of late.
Second? Okay, there's Bill. Okay. And you understand the motion, right, everybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item 11, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number 475, an ordinance amending section 14364 concerning the issuances of operators' licenses.
So this is in response to Wisconsin Senate Bill 203, which suggested kind of streamlining of the process for the approval of operator licenses. Governor Evers signed that bill into law, which gave discretion or authority to, I guess it gave authority to common councils or elected bodies to allow, to delegate their authority of approving liquor licenses to the city clerk. And the reason I, the reason I stress that point of proving is because this would not give authority for clerks to deny licenses. That would still reside with the council, but simply the approval of a license would be kind of expedited through an administrative process.
Okay. Teresa? Any questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay. Linda, any questions or comments?
No.
Devin? Brian?
Nope.
Larry?
Just a clarification, I guess. I have no concern about the current clerk taking care of business properly. My question is, once a operator's license is approved, then the council has no, no chance to rebuttal that issue. Is that correct? Or that issuance of that license?
I'm gonna kick that one over to Mark S.
You're correct. If you've designated, if you've authorized the city clerk to issue operators' licenses and the clerk issues a license, then it's issued unless you can find a basis for revoking it.
So, would, like, a list of operator licenses that have been approved be just submitted to council, or what is that process like?
That's up to the city to determine what that process is. Basically, provide a report, I guess, to the council. You can do, you could require that. But the, you're authorizing the clerk to, to issue operators' licenses on his or her own discretion, following the criteria that has always been followed.
And that criteria does include my review, you know, records, checks, and all the things that, you know, when we've had recommendations for denials before, you've seen some of that information we bring to you to make that decision. So that process all still remains. It's just the decision would be made between the police department and the clerk about the approving that license.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. I have no concern about the current process.
Bill?
I guess that, my question related to what, you know, Scout was just mentioning. The, the ordinance does require the background check, just as it does now, so that's still there. However, my reading would be that even if the police chief or the police department completed their background check and didn't recommend, this really is granting the authority to go ahead and, and grant the operator's license anyway, I believe. And I have a little bit of concern with that. I guess, I don't have any problem at all with speeding up the administrative process. That's a really good idea. But I wonder whether we could get a piece in there where if the background check, if the recommendation from the police department is negative, that then it gets somehow tossed back to the council for decision.
I have a quick question. So what if, like, there's a disagreement between the clerk and the police chief, or, I don't know, like?
You know, I'd like to see it move forward quickly and not have to come to the council. If the background check is clear, they've completed the required, you know, course, you know, let it, let it fly right through. It's only if the background check is revealing something negative that I think that the council might need to get involved.
Then we do get involved. That's when, when it is brought to us.
So would it be?
But my, my understanding of how this is written, though, is that the background check could be done. There could be a negative in that background check. That would go to the city clerk, and the city clerk could decide to go ahead and issue the operator's license anyway, that it would not come to the city council. That's, that's the concern that I have.
But ours wouldn't.
Still have, we would still have the revocation process intact. So the revocation process would be intact. So imagining the scenario where a clerk says, no, I don't, not gonna take your advice, or don't believe the background check, I'm gonna issue it anyway, there's still a mechanism to bring it in front of the council to revoke that license if it's been granted and there's an issue with it. So I don't necessarily oppose the conversation. I'm, I am, if, if we do decide to add it in, I am fine with bringing denials in front of the council. But even if we don't add that, I think there's other mechanisms to cover that.
So geez, I understand, Chris, I'm sorry.
Thanks. So when you say there's a process to revoke, is that a legal proceeding process to revoke?
Yeah, revoking someone's license, operator's license to serve alcohol is, is, that revocation process is a council action.
So if I can ask a clarification of that, then, if I, as an older person, wanted to have something reviewed in this area, I could request that? It's a council.
Define reviewed, I guess. I don't understand the question.
If I wanted, if I wanted, maybe I should rephrase that. If I wanted a revocation review to be conducted on a particular operator's license that was granted, and I thought there was information or knowledge that would cause that to be a revocation, could I bring that forth to the council as an individual council member?
Not only you, but a member of the general public?
Okay, that's what I wanted.
You can give a complaint to us saying, look, I think somebody's violating their license, here's the information. We would investigate and proceed whichever direction we needed to go.
Okay. So that can change.
Mark S.?
Just, just so I can clarify, what both I and Chief were talking about there was a revocation procedure if, after the license is issued, the person granted the license engaged in conduct, which would warrant revocation of that license. There could not be a revocation process started merely because you weren't happy with the fact that a license was issued because you didn't like the background check.
So would it come before the council if there was a disagreement between the chief and the clerk?
Well, you could include that.
Could we amend this to include it?
Yeah, in most cases, you probably needed to, to change two ordinances, both 365, three and 364. Your current 363A currently allows the clerk to issue a license, so I didn't need to change that. But 364 did not, so I added that wording. And I think by implication, if they can, if they can issue it, then they can not issue it or deny it, and then it can come to the council. But so wording can be added. As I say, right now, you don't have that in the one ordinance that allows for, for it to be issued. The clerk has the discretion to not, and issue it and refer it to council. So, it, that, that can be clarified if you want.
I don't know who to go to next. If someone else has a, has a comment, do you want to just raise your hand? Chief?
The, the current bar is set pretty high, I would say, to have a denial of a license. So the way our system is set up now, it's one alcohol or drug-related conviction in five years is discretionary between the chief and the clerk, whether to recommend or deny. Two or more alcohol or drug-related convictions in five years would be recommendation for denial. Two or more Class A misdemeanor crimes or felony convictions that relate to selling or serving of alcohol in five years is recommended for denial. It, it would, it would be a, I guess, just my editorial opinion, a very bizarre situation where someone, where a clerk would say, hey, you know, even though it meets these two things that happen in five years, let's just give it to them anyway. And frankly, I wouldn't sign off on the issuing of that license. Again, I'm not opposed, if you guys want to, to be the referees in it, I have zero objection to that. Just explaining how the process works now, it does take the approval of the police chief to then bring a license forward for approval. And should I deny to do that based upon the, the parameters we already have set? It would be interesting to have a clerk decide to do that anyway.
Anything else from anybody?
That, that makes me feel a little bit better. I, you know, I, I, if the police chief is comfortable with it, I'm all for smoothing the administrative portion.
Well, and the only comment I would have is right now, we have a chief and a clerk that work well together, and we have a good chief and a clerk, but these two people are not always going to be in these positions. So a lot of times we focus on the, the people and not the position. So that was the only concern that I had is, you know, sometimes people don't get along and.
And we may have to re-monitor, or monitor it as we go along and continue to make a decision that benefits it as we go along. But I would hate to, to make something so detailed for people that are good at what they do.
And to add a little more context to it, in my tenure here, which is approaching five years unbelievably, I think I have brought maybe three licenses to you recommending denial. I bring dozens, and Leanne brings dozens to you every single year that you approve en masse without looking at any of the documentation, it's just brought up for a vote, your approval. This will, what, this is designed to not have to do that part of the process.
Right.
Is there a motion? Teresa's making a motion.
And I move to recommend approval of ordinance four seventy five, ordinance amending section fourteen, three, sixty four concerning the issuance of operator's licenses.
Is there a second? Bill's seconding it. Uh, Mark?
Just to, just to clarify, the motion is the motion, this is so I understand, because there was some conversation here, is the motion to approve the first reading, waive the second and third and adopt?
Sounds great, Mark, thank you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item number twelve, discussion and possible action regarding a bid award for the Elizabeth Street resurfacing project.
So this is the bid for the Elizabeth Street project that was approved at the council, at the last council meeting. The bids came back as shown in the memo provided by Mark Langer, who now works for us, under his signature line. That shows Payne and Dolan came back as the low bidder and actually came in beneath our estimates, so that is good news.
Howie, anything?
No, it's a, that's a good bid, and I think they want to be done, Mark, isn't that right before, in the middle of July or around in June?
I actually spoke with them today, and it sounds like they're interested in getting started, you know, as soon as they can after the agreements are signed and in place.
Okay, Devon, any questions or comments?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Larry?
Sorry, no.
Bill?
No.
Brian?
Looks good.
Linda? Linda, where are you?
She's not on, looks like. We lost her.
Uh-oh.
Let the minutes reflect.
Looks like we lost our audience.
They left a while ago. They, they got bored with us.
Yeah. Bathroom break.
Okay, well, hopefully Linda will come back and join us, but all those in favor?
You can look for him.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so we last saw Linda sometime before six fifty seven, in case there's a missing persons report.
I like Teresa's comment that Linda went to go look for the media.
Okay, thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding mutual aid agreements with the city of Janesville and the city of Edgerton for utility operations.
So this is an effort that was undertaken by Howie, so I give him a tremendous amount of credit for this, in seeking out potential mutual aid agreements with Edgerton and the city of Janesville. In the event, and this is not just a COVID-related event, this is in the event of the city of, of Milton or the city of Janesville or the city of Edgerton, to that matter, is faced with some sort of emergency situation that either limits their ability to respond or, or, or requires a larger response, that we would have something in place that would allow us to do so. I think Howie has indicated that we've been doing this with Edgerton for a long time, but we wanted to kind of make sure that we had something in writing, and at Janesville, jumped right on board with it as well, right, Howie?
Yeah, and also part of this was, CIV, CIVMAC has also written part of this also, so they're, they're involved with it too.
Want the minutes to reflect at six fifty eight, Linda returned to the Zoom meeting.
But, but it, it's a good agreement, just in case we have to help each other out with something, because you never know, even besides the virus thing, storms or anything can happen, so.
Yeah, Howie, I really, I really appreciate you taking the initiative to do this, it's a, um, you know, it looks like it'd be, it could be very helpful, so, um.
But, and I, just one other comment, you know, this is particularly poignant, not only because of COVID, but I think, you know, probably folks in the public don't know, I mean, the, the utility department right now is operating with forty percent less staff than it was just a few weeks ago. And that's not because anybody's sick or anything like that, it's because we had a retirement and we had somebody who leaves to take another position, and we can't fill those positions right now because of this pandemic. So we're already running tremendously short staffs in the utility divisions, so this, you know, fingers crossed, but, you know, these things happen.
Larry, any questions or comments?
No comments, thank you.
Bill?
No comment.
Teresa?
No, just very impressive, Howie, looks good.
Well, it is like Public Works Week or something, so we would expect a little bit of above and beyond.
There you go.
Brian?
Janesville did a lot of this too, it was, you know, I mean, they really did a lot of this to help out, so.
Howie, you're just too modest.
I was just gonna say, it looks good, and it kind of made me think back when we had the flooding a couple of years ago, and this, something like this might be helpful for something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Devon? Any questions or comments?
No.
Linda? You're on mute, you know, you're here, but we can't hear you. There you go.
No, I'm good, okay. Wow. Okay.
Are you?
I think it's great, and I'm, and, you know, this is just another one of those places where we are just, we have an awesome organization and a good group of people here that look, look to do these types of things.
We do. So is there a motion to, um, accept the mutual aid agreements with the city of Janesville and the city of Edgerton for utility operations? Linda and Ryan? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion of possible action regarding a reappointment of Harvey Smith to the Historic Preservation Commission.
This one's a little straightforward, Harvey got back to the mayor after appointments were made, that he did indeed want to be reappointed, so this is a recommendation from Mayor Welch to reappoint Harvey Smith to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Do you guys need me to call your names one by one, or do you think you want to move forward real quick?
He's done a good job previously, so, as I said before.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ryan and Larry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Uh, now, number fifteen, another very controversial item. I anticipate a lot of debate. Uh, selection of the official newspaper of the city of Milton, the Milton Courier.
So every year, we select an official newspaper, and the reason behind this is, is because we need to have, we need to select an official newspaper to publish our meeting agendas, meeting minutes and things of that nature, election notices, and Milton Courier is obviously our local paper, so it makes sense to do so. We could vote against it and pick a different one, though, I don't know, Wall Street Journal or something.
New York Times, whatever you want, okay, Ryan?
The Chicago Tribune, because it's a good Cubs cup coverage.
I was just wondering if maybe our two guests earlier, you know, Gazette and Stan, were trying to push for getting themselves picked.
Maybe, yeah.
I think Courier's done a great job in the past.
Okay, Devon?
No comment.
Linda?
Would you like a motion?
No, I'm, I just feel like, you know, we don't want to politicize this, and we need all of the vote, you know, everybody to make a comment.
Oh. No comments.
Okay, Teresa?
Yes, they do a fine job.
Bill?
No, no problem.
Larry?
No problem.
Okay, is there a motion? Ryan and Linda, to designate the Milton Courier as the official newspaper of the city of Milton, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, well, if someone could just do a press release to the Courier then, and let them know. All right. Review of April financial statements, this is the Dan Show.
There's not much, I guess if there's questions, there's nothing right now that is of concern. A little too early to make predictions on how the year's going to end up, considering there's only been six weeks worth of COVID time built into this. But city operations seem to be just chugging along it, I haven't seen anything unusual on time sheets or anything like that that would give me cause for concern, nor do I see anything on the aggregate when I look at the year-to-date stuff, so.
Larry, anything, or any questions for Dan?
None at this time, thank you.
Bill?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Ryan?
No.
Devon?
No.
Linda?
No.
Okay, we're gonna go to number seventeen now. General items, raise your hand if you have a committee report to give. Thank you. You didn't hear me snort when I laughed, did you? Was I still on mute? Uh, staff reports, Inga?
Well, the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Story Garden Subcommittee met last night, um, so Story Gardens were still planning to plant two of the raised garden beds and plant a pollinator garden, we're trying to logistically plan that with the weather, and just acquiring the compost material and the soil that we need to be able to do that. Parks and Recreation Commission, we're still plugging away with the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, and still trying to figure out what that process is going to look like since there's social distancing and there's a large community engagement component to creating that type of a plan. So we're holding off on some of those pieces, but trying to get some of the other sections looked at and kind of out of the way for now at least.
Hey, thanks, Inga, Howie?
Mostly right now, trying to just catch up with the, one big deal is get the cemeteries looking nice for Memorial Days, even though we're not having a, you know, official program, we want them to look good for everything, for the parks and stuff, for the weekend. And then it's probably some of the same stuff from Mark, Elizabeth Street's gonna start, and the sanitary sewer at North Janesville, and then they're just planting some trees last week, and there was, I think, they had a list of some of the things on the weekly report of some of the other things that's been going on.
I just have to recognize Howie and his crew again, because I got a letter from a little six-year-old girl, Amelia, and she informed us that the merry-go-round was not working properly at Goodrich Park, is that right, Howie?
North Goodrich.
North Goodrich Park. And, you know, I just said, hey, Howie, the merry-go-round isn't working right, and just like that, it was fixed. And I was able to write Amelia back and let her know that our very special Parks guys believe that they have fixed that merry-go-round, and someday I hope she could play on it again.
And we probably have a picture of it, because we're adding another part to it tomorrow to fix it better.
Oh, good, because.
Picture of it.
Uh, I was going to try the merry-go-round myself before I came to council to make sure it wasn't fact fixed, but I ran out of time. So I will not try the merry-go-round till a later date. Maybe Howie can spin me out.
Not until tomorrow anyways, so.
Then we can have a picture taken of that.
Yes, of the mayor flying off the merry-go-round or, you know, upchucking or something. Ashley, how's it going?
Going, we'll continue to do curbside service at the library for the next couple of weeks or so, and kind of reevaluate how we want to potentially open up to the public at what capacity, but we've had over maybe about two hundred and fifty curbside pickups in the last couple of weeks, so we're getting our books out to people, and hopefully delivery will be opening up among the libraries, so our patrons can have access to more materials.
Very good. Chief?
Holding our own, I am personally jugging, juggling the emergency services or emergency manager hat with the police chief hat, and the police department's going fine. As we get busier within the communities, we're anticipating getting busier also at the police department, it'll be interesting to see how our county partners then ramp up, because when a police department gets busy, so does the rest of the criminal justice system. So getting our courts, district attorney's office, and in some respects, the jail kind of ramped back up again will be an interesting process that we'll have to watch as it goes.
Thank you. Mark E., anything?
Uh, the only thing I could add beyond what Howie said about the other part The only thing I could add beyond what Howie said about the other projects, the affluent force main out by the interstate, gotta call the contractor. Sounds like the DOT project might be ahead of schedule. They moved up their road closure of Newville Road from July 1st to June 1st. So we're adjusting our schedule to fit within the DOT schedule. So we'll be starting that work the beginning of June as well.
Al, I had to unmute myself.
I mean, the last couple of weeks have been incredibly chaotic, but this week again seems to be no different. I'm sure folks have heard by now the news that the county is rescinding their sacred home order effective Thursday morning at 8:00 AM. It was discussed yesterday on the task force call that they would be doing so. We didn't know until this morning at about 8:30 AM that they were gonna announce it this morning. But that's, and that's fine. That's not, I'm not criticizing Josh. Josh has done a great job. But it just, it creates a lot of disturbance in the system or disturbance in the force. So that has kind of put us in a sprint mode once again to kind of prepare for that. Obviously, that is going to come with a tremendous amount of questions from the business community and from our residents as to what does this mean to me? What does this mean to us? The Rock County Bounce Back Plan is, is, is a well-thought-out document based on, based on science. And we appreciate the efforts that the Rock County Health Department put together in creating that document. But it is just guidelines. There's no mandation in it. There's no, it's not in order. So it's, it's guidelines that they, that we all hope people adhere to, so we're not back in this position again sooner rather than later. In addition to that, the city of Milton has been working pretty much all day and including even during this meeting with Chief Ernie Rhodes to develop some guidelines for businesses. Again, these would just be guidelines, but they would be, you know, some health, helpful resources that businesses could look to. For folks who have had any time to review the Rock County Bounce Back Plan, there's many references throughout the document to that, that talk about best practices. And I think the challenge that folks are gonna have, you know, especially those folks who want to do the right thing, are just gonna say, okay, what are best practices? And there are a myriad of resources out there that, that one could look to, to be best practices. And because it is not in order, it is only guidelines, it's really up to that business to see what guidelines they want to adhere to. So working with Ernie Rhodes, put together a tremendous document that he has, that the city of Janesville published today. And we are going through that document as well to kind of Miltonize it a little bit. So we're hoping to have that day, that ready to go as well, maybe even tonight, I'm not sure. But we want to have that out there. So when we start to get those calls, which we already have, as to, okay, what does this mean Thursday at 8:00 AM? Is it the Wild, Wild West? Or are there restrictions? And are people gonna, are, is the police department gonna cite us if we don't follow these guidelines? And what, what's 25% of my threshold? And, you know, how do I, how do I interpret this? We're gonna try to help, help people through that process. And we've had several conversations over the last 24 hours with the Milton area Chamber of Commerce, so we can make sure that we are doing the best we can to communicate the same message to our businesses and industries. And I think we've done some, had some good conversations with Danny and John Cruzan along those lines. And they have a kind of a message ready to go. And we're, we have kind of a message ready to go and we want to make sure that we're kind of saying the same things. So it is a challenge and it's gonna continue to be a challenge. And we will work through it as best we can. And I think we've done a great job up to this point and I don't see that changing moving forward. I think one of the last pieces of this puzzle that we started to discuss at great length today at about 10:30 with the city leadership team is, okay, with this new information, what does that mean for the city of Milton as an organization? What does that mean for our reopening and reemerging plans? And as you may recall, we had something drafted up that we were pretty comfortable with and we were gonna kind of unveil. And then the Supreme Court decision struck down the Badger Bounce Back Plan and our document referenced the Badger Bounce Back Plan all over the place. So that made it a little difficult to kind of move forward with that. The Rock County Bounce Back Plan has provided us hopefully that framework that we can refer to. And really, actually, I guess at this point, all we need to do is find and replace. And where it says Badger, we'll just have it say Rock County and we'll be all set. There's a little bit more to it than that. So we're hoping to have something for that together, possibly on Thursday, I think, would make some sense. There's still some pieces that we've been talking about, even Anissa and I were on the phone up until 5:58, talking about some pieces of that and what that means for us. So it's still a work in progress and what we know today will change tomorrow. And that's just kind of the new normal. And as frustrating as it is, and I think I said to John Cruzan yesterday when I was talking to him, there's at least once a day I have to look down to make sure both of my feet are still on the ground, because it's pretty crazy.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really want to go through this again. I hope the next year or so we can get ourselves out of this. I don't know, we, no one will be able to function out of crisis mode, I suppose, though. But it's been, it's been very challenging. But I also want to say that, you know, the city of Milton staff have been great. Like, we've all had to adapt and change and work through and discuss and, you know, try to come to an agreement. And it's not easy to do, because it's new territory for all of us. So I just, I appreciate the staff. I think, like, when I think about doing, like, how we did our community picnic, like, I feel like the whole city of Milton deserves a plaque and it should be put in the Milton House saying, we all get an award for all the efforts in trying to adapt to a pandemic. So now, you know, what you've all been waiting for, as usual, I didn't miss any staff reports, right? Is team building. And we were gonna do, like, something cool called breakout rooms, but somebody who shall be nameless said that had to be on the agenda. So we're not gonna do breakout rooms, but you will be doing breakout rooms at the next city council meeting, Zoom breakout rooms for team building. And Inga will offer training. Inga's going, what? So now, so everybody needs a paper and pen to do this. And you're gonna have to come to some sort of consensus. And I am going to read a list to you of sports stadiums. And you're gonna have to put this list in order from smallest capacity to largest capacity. This is totally geared towards the guys, just to get them on my good side. So are you ready? Now, this is not in the correct order. You have to put these in the order from smallest to largest. So I'm just gonna read them off in a random order. Wrigley Field, Fenway Park, Yankee Stadium, Rose Bowl, Madison Square Garden, Lambeau Field. So why don't we just give you all 60 seconds? And then we'll see who believes they for sure got the answer. And then you guys can all decide or choose another answer.
Yep. You want smallest to largest?
Smallest to largest. But let's give everybody another few seconds to figure this out. Howie is so anxious to tell you what the answer is, he doesn't even want to give you a chance to think of it.
I might be wrong. Dan's probably knows him already.
I got it.
Can I just defer my answer to Dan? Is that allowed?
Well, I think what we'll do is we'll just, we'll let, we'll let Howie and Dan and Anne, we'll let all the guys go. We'll let, go first. And then if somebody like wants to like jump on like the Howie team or the Al team, you know, you can do that.
I don't know that anybody wants to be on my team. If everybody's, if everybody's got it written down, you could, you could be on the honor system. It could be, you could give us the answers and then we could say, we could say, like, I got five out of six right or four out of six.
Could just flash it.
No, no.
Al's idea.
I'm gonna just go on how people, like, the guys are pictured across the screen. So Howie is in the right-hand corner. So Howie, go ahead.
Okay, Madison Square Garden, Wrigley, Fenway, Yankee Stadium, Lambeau Field, Rose Bowl.
That's exactly what I have.
Okay, just raise your hand if you have the exact same thing as Howie.
That's what I have. That's crazy.
Okay, that's not right. So Mark S., do you want to read your list?
Madison Square, Fenway, Wrigley, Yankee, Lambeau, Rose Bowl.
Raise your hand if you had that as the order. Dan and Larry, is that it?
That's the right answer.
That is the right answer.
Oh, good.
Madison, Fenway, Wrigley, Yankee, Lambeau, Rose Bowl.
So Howie and I had Fenway and Wrigley.
Wrigley switched around.
Yeah.
So when I did.
Show you the power of Cubs fans.
When I did this, we had those two switched around too. So in theory, what we would have done is kind of divided you up into three teams and you would have went to your breakout rooms and you would have had to have to come to a consensus. And then you would have submitted your questions that way. So next week we'll have a different trivia question and we will agendize that. And then you're gonna all go off into breakout rooms and hopefully y'all come back. Because sometimes people go to a breakout room, my experience, and they don't come back.
Is that where Linda went?
Yes, they do, they do an Irish Linda.
Hey, Howie would have been right if it was 2005, guys. Ended a couple of times since '05.
So, you know, it's always good to educate the public on the features of Zoom, since we're using it. Our next meeting will be June 2nd, 2020. And is there a motion to adjourn? Bill? And Ryan? All those in favor? All those opposed?